Councilman Steele, can you give us a morning prayer?
And understanding. So that we, as a council, can get this business done. And the Ogallis, and once again be leaders in the whole United States. Lukashira, we mean well, to guide us so that we can understand what we are doing and why we're doing it. Amen.
Oh, open up. Councilman Dillon, can you give us some words of encouragement?
Thank you. Like I said earlier, you know, today we need to get business done for our people out there. And I know it's campaign season, but let's keep that until July. Let's start in July instead of right out the gate. And we need to stay focused. We need to spend ten minutes on each line item in our agenda. Any more time than that, we're wasting time. And we need to have our critic Sergeant at Arms in here and making sure that these rules are followed. Uh, we sound chaotic. If you listen to other tribes when they're having their meetings, they don't sound like ours. And we're the leaders. We should set the tone. We shouldn't be arguing with each other and carrying on the way we do. And it's, it's sad that we have to bring this up and talk about it, but if we don't, it's going to continue. And I know, Mr. President, a lot of times you try to get order and everybody gets feisty and carries on, and that's not where we're, that's not what we're supposed to be doing. We're supposed to be doing business. So let's stay focused today, people, and spend ten minutes on each one of these issues. And if it doesn't get passed by then, it needs to go back to the committee. And that's where all the talking should take place anyway is in the committee. That's why we have committee meetings. And if you don't want to go to a committee meeting and you want to come to the floor and have a fit, then that's on you because we're going to take the floor away from you. And we just need to get business done. So please, let's focus on getting business done for our tribe as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Secretary, roll call.
Wesley Hawkins Senior. Jim Meeks is excused. Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior is excused. Howard Rooks.
Here.
Austin Watkins Senior. Tyler Yellowboy.
Present.
Wendell Youngman Junior.
Present.
James Cross.
Present.
Present.
Anna Halverson.
Present.
Ella Giancarlo.
Here.
George Dreamer Junior.
Present.
Robin Tapio.
Present.
Tyler Lenderman is excused. David Poyer. Don Regospare will be late. Sonia Littlehawk Weston.
Here.
Jackie Sears.
Here.
Garfield Little Dog will be late. John Steele Senior. Craig Dillon.
Yeah.
Fourteen present, one absent, three excused, too late. We establish corn. Uh, before we begin here, I would like to, uh, have the Sergeant at Arms, um, just come up and speak briefly on, uh, today's business and how we should, uh, try to maintain order here according to, uh, some of the, um, suggestions that were made this morning. And, uh, so we can conduct, conduct business accordingly and efficiently. So with that, I'll turn it over to Sergeant Arms.
Good morning. My name is Ed Arncot. I'm Sergeant at Arms. And I'd say good morning to the listening audience, to the guests here, to the council, executive board, travel, all the tribal workers, people of the pine membership of the pine reservation. Yeah, I'd just like to, we talked about it earlier here, and, um, one of the issues we have is time and how to use it best we can. So one of the things that we're going to do here is, uh, when an individual is, uh, given the floor, we're going to see if they could ask them to, uh, stay on topic and also to say what they have to say within a period of time, which is five minutes. And you all heard, uh, Councilman Dillon give the words of encouragement, and I guess this would also go for the council too. A lot of times when there's say questions and there's a lot of comments with those questions too. So you know, the council could support that and just if you're going to ask a question, keep it to a question and to comments. I mean, keep the comments minimum. And also one of the things I also was observing council too is that some of you will speak on a topic about two or three times. So if you could just say your piece at that one time, then things will go smooth, more smoothly. I would get, you know, get things done here. And also too, you know, we talked about earlier about, um, people getting upset when they're being called on. I know the public may not like this. You know, this, uh, idea of just giving five minutes. And I know some of you council people may get upset too when get called upon for that also, but it's good for everybody. I mean, you're, we're, we're representing the tribe. So try to set that example there as best we could. So I just wanted to share that. Thank the chairman there, all of you for supporting that because there's only so many hours and minutes in a day and try to get things done for, for the people there. So just wanted to say that and thank you all for listening. Open up.
Yes, thank you, Sergeant Arms. Okay, so we're going to get started here, move on to our first, uh, agenda item. The second day of a tribal council session. Uh, we're going to jump right into, um, uh, Economic and Business Development Committee, and I'll turn it over to the chair. Go ahead, Councilman Dreamer.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, listening audience, council. Um, first, first one is resolution. Ogallisu Tribal Council, Ogallisu Tribe approving and authorizing the Language of Confidentiality Agreement and Service Agreement with the Great Plains Telecommunications LLC. Whereas the Ogallisu Tribe is a sovereign tribal nation that has entered into treaties as the supreme law of the land with the United States government pursuant to the U.S. Constitution, Article Six, designatory to the Treaty of Fort Laramie of eighteen fifty-one, one stat seven four nine, September seventeenth, eighteen fifty-one, and the Treaty of Fort Laramie of eighteen sixty-eight, fifteen stat six thirty-five, April twenty-ninth, eighteen sixty-eight, continues the nation-to-nation relationship with the federal government. And as the Ogallisu Tribe organized under Section sixteen of the Indian Reorganization Act of nineteen thirty-four by adopting a federally approved constitutional bylaws, under Article Three of the Tribal Constitution, the Ogallisu Tribal Council is the governing body of the tribe. And as Article Four, Sections one F, one K, one M, and one W empower the Tribal Council to manage the economic affairs of the tribe, protect and preserve the property of the tribe, adopt laws governing the conduct of persons on the Pinewood Indian Reservation, and adopt laws protecting, promoting the health and general welfare of the Ogallisu Tribe and its membership. And as through Tribal Council Resolution twenty-two dash eighty-three, the Tribal Council of the Ogallisu Tribe established the Law of the Code of Telecommunications, OLT, to provide affordable, accessible connectivity for information telecommunications for the Oyate of the Pinewood Indian Reservation. Whereas per Tribal Council Resolution, Resolution twenty-two dash eighty-three, OLT has the authority to work directly with broadband and telecommunications contractors and consultants of the tribe to develop and implement plans and furtherance of the tribe's broadband and telecommunications goals. And whereas OLT is administering and carrying out broadband deployment pursuant to the tribe's National Telecommunications Resolution Number and Information Administration and TIA grant in that broadband deployment includes a pilot project which requires back call for internet access. Whereas OLT has negotiated a confidentiality agreement and service agreement with the Great Plains Telecommunications LLC to provide the required back call for the tribe's pilot project. And whereas the Tribal Council of this Ogallisu Tribe has reviewed the confidentiality agreement and service agreement with Great Plains Telecommunications LLC and believes the language of said agreements is acceptable. Now therefore be resolved that the Ogallisu Tribal Council does hereby approve and authorize the language and the confidentiality agreement and the service agreement with the Great Plains Telecommunications LLC for the back call for the tribe's broadband pilot project and authorized as entering into said agreements are substantially similar agreements at the discretion of OLT. Motion.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Dreamer, second by Councilwoman Tapio. Secretary, call for the vote.
Howard Rooks.
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior.
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy.
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yes.
James Cross.
James.
Anna Halverson.
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Robin Tapio.
Yes.
David Poyer. Sonia Littlehawk Weston. Jackie Sears.
Uh huh.
John Steele Senior. Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Unanimous fourteen, motion carried.
Next one. Ordinance of Ogallisu Tribal Council of Ogallisu Tribe to amend Ogallisu Tribe Marijuana Control Ordinance, Chapter Seven, Security, Site Management, and Inventory Control, Section Two, See to Sale Tracking System. Whereas the Ogallisu Tribe adopted its constitutional bylaws by referendum vote on December fourteenth, nineteen thirty-five, in accordance with Section sixteen of the Indian Reorganization Act of nineteen thirty-four, codified as amended at twenty-five USC subsection five one two three. In Article Three of the Constitution, the Ogallisu Tribal Council is the governing body of the Ogallisu Tribe. And whereas pursuant to the constitutional bylaws of Ogallisu Tribe, Ogallisu Tribal Council exercises legislative powers to enact and promulgate resolutions and ordinances. And as Article Four, Section one F, one K, one M, and one W empower the Tribal Council to manage the economic affairs of the tribe, protect and preserve the property of the tribe, adopt laws governing the conduct of persons on the Pinewood Indian Reservation, and adopt laws protecting, promoting the health and general welfare of Ogallisu Tribe and its membership. And as a Tribal Council enacted ordinance number sixteen dash twenty-two, amending the Criminal Code to allow for enacts penalties for dangerous drug offenses on August twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen, and further amended by Tribal Council Ordinance. And whereas the referendum vote was held on March tenth, two thousand and twenty, and the Ogallisu Oyate voted in favor of the tribe adopting laws to decriminalize recreational marijuana and to approve of the use of medical marijuana. And whereas the Tribal Council enacted ordinance number twenty-sixty-six, adopting the Marijuana Control Ordinance. Whereas the Economic and Business Development Committee met on October twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, and recommends amendments to clarify Chapter Seven, Security, Site Management, and Inventory Control, Section Two, See to Sale Tracking System. Whereas the Tribal Council finds that adoption of the proposed amendments to the Marijuana Control Ordinance is in the best interest of the tribe and its membership. Now, therefore be it ordained that the Ogallisu Tribal Council hereby amends Chapter Seven, Section Two, Ogallisu Tribe Marijuana Control Ordinance, Ordinance Number twenty-sixty-six, October twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty. To read as follows, with deletions and strike through and additions underlined and in bold. Chapter Seven, Security, Site Management, and Inventory Control. Section Two, See to Sale Tracking System. The Commission designated BioTrack as the required inventory tracking system defined by this ordinance. Each marijuana business shall utilize BioTrack and its inventory tracking system in compliance with this ordinance. Be it further ordained that the foregoing amendment to the Marijuana Control Ordinance shall go into effect immediately and shall supersede, repeal, and replace all prior inconsistent laws of Ogallisu Tribe. Motion.
Okay, we have motion by Councilman Dreamer. Second by Councilman Rooks. Call for the vote.
Howard Rooks.
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior. Tyler Yellowboy. Wendell Youngman Junior. James Cross.
Yes.
Anna Halverson.
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Robin Tapio.
Yes.
David Poyer. Sonia Littlehawk Weston.
Ah.
Jackie Sears.
Uh huh.
John Steele Senior. Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Well, we have one no, one not voting. Motion carried.
Question.
Yes, go ahead.
I was just noticing, uh, Stacy, you've probably seen it, the years are uh, twenty twenty-two. On the certification, you'll correct all those. I think on a previous resolution, it's the same way. The years were different.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, the, the certification is uh, a little bit odd too, but we usually, um, fix it while we're doing this.
Oh, Stacy, can you do the third item for me, please? Thank you.
Ordinance of the Ogallisu Tribal Council of the Ogallisu Tribe and Unincorporated Tribe. Ordinance of the Ogallisu Tribal Council of the Ogallisu Tribe to amend the Ogallisu Tribe Marijuana Control Ordinance, Chapter One, General Provisions, Section Four, Definitions, Chapter Four, Marijuana Facilities, Section One, Marijuana Facility Operation Procedures, Part C, and to add Section eleven, Inspections and Compliance, and Section twelve, Compliance, and subpoenas to Chapter Four, Marijuana Facilities. Whereas the Ogallisu Tribe adopted its constitution and bylaws by referendum vote on December fourteenth, nineteen thirty-five, in accordance with Section sixteen of the Indian Reorganization Act of nineteen thirty-four, codified as amended at twenty-five USC subsection five one two three. And under Article Three of the Constitution, the Ogallisu Tribal Council is the governing body of the Ogallisu Tribe. And whereas pursuant to the Constitution and bylaws of the Ogallisu Tribe, the Ogallisu Tribal Council exercises legislative powers to enact and promulgate resolutions and ordinances. And whereas Article Four, Sections one F, one K, one M, and one W empower the Tribal Council to manage the economic affairs of the tribe, protect and preserve the property of the tribe, adopt laws governing the conduct of persons on the Pinewood Indian Reservation, and adopt laws protecting and promoting the health and general welfare of the Ogallisu Tribe and its membership. And whereas the Tribal Council enacted ordinance number sixteen dash twenty-two, amending the Criminal Code to allow for enhanced penalties for dangerous drug offenses on August twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen, and further amended by Tribal Council Ordinance. And whereas a referendum vote was held on March tenth, two thousand and twenty, and the Ogallisu Oyate voted in favor of the tribe adopting laws to decriminalize recreational marijuana and to approve for the use of medical marijuana. And whereas the Tribal Council enacted ordinance number twenty-sixty-six, adopting the Marijuana Control Ordinance. And whereas the Economic and Business Development Committee met on October twenty-nine, two thousand and twenty-three, and recommends amendments to clarify Chap- Chapter Seven, Security, Site Management, and Inventory Control, Section Two, See to Sale Tracking System. And whereas the Tribal Council finds that adoption of the proposed amendments to the Marijuana Control Ordinance is in the best interest of the tribe and its membership. Now, therefore be it ordained that the Ogallisu Tribal Council hereby amends the Ogallisu Tribe Marijuana Control Ordinance Number twenty-sixty-six, October twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty. To amend Chapter One, General Provisions, Section Four, Definitions, Sample. To amend Chapter Four, Marijuana Facilities, Section One, Marijuana Facilities Operating Procedures, C, and Delete D. And to add Chapter Four, Marijuana Facilities, Section eleven, Inspections and Compliance, and Section twelve, Compliance and Subpoenas. To read as follows, with deletions and strike through and additions underlined and in bold. Chapter One, Section Four, Definition, Sample. Means any item collected from the marijuana business that is provided to a licensed testing facility for testing or that is required by the Marijuana Commission for purpose of inspection or investigation and shall not exceed five grams per production batch. The following is a non-exhaustive list of types of samples. Marijuana, marijuana concentrate, marijuana products, soil, growing, medium, water, solvent, or swab of a counter or equipment. Chapter Four, Marijuana Facilities, Section One, Marijuana Facility Operating Procedures. C, marijuana businesses shall not sell or serve marijuana or marijuana products at any time other than between the hours of six a.m. and eleven fifty-nine p.m., Monday through Sunday. Section eleven, inspections and compliance. A, the Commission shall direct quarterly, quarterly inspections of a marijuana business and may, at its sole discretion, direct the inspection of a marijuana business randomly at any time and without prior notice, up to three times per year annually, to determine the marijuana business's compliance with this ordinance. In facilities where violations of this ordinance are discovered, the Commission may direct additional random inspections until such time that all violations are cured. All areas, activities, and records within the licensed premises of a marijuana business are subject to inspection. Submission of an application by a licensee or insurance of a license is, to a licensee constitutes consent, um, consent for inspection by the Commission. B, a marijuana business shall allow immediate access to any facilities at the licensed premises upon presentation of photo identification documenting that the Commission representative or inspector's affiliation with the Commission. C, a marijuana business shall immediately, upon request, make available to the Commission's representative or inspector all information, including but not limited to samples, evidence, documents, recording, photos, and videos for purposes of the inspection or investigation of an incident or complaint. The marijuana business shall make all reasonable efforts to facilitate and cooperate with the inspection or investigation. D, samples collected by the Marijuana Commission during the investigation or inspection shall become the property of the Marijuana Commission. The Marijuana Commission shall furnish copies of any testing results to the licensee and shall return the testing results and any inspection or investigation reports for a minimum of five years. The Marijuana Commission shall post inspection results as pass or fail at its office and it's on its website for viewing by the general public. E, during the inspection or investigation, the Commission's representative or inspector may direct the marijuana business to test any contaminants, including but not limited to mold, mildew, heavy metals, plant growth regulators, and the presence of pesticides not approved for use and as defined by the ordinance.
O.
F, the failure to facilitate and cooperate with an inspection or investigation is grounds for administrative or disciplinary action against the marijuana business and/or licensee, including but not limited to license suspension or revocation and fines. Section twelve, Compliance and Subpoenas. The Marijuana Commission has the authority to deem access to a marijuana business or a licensee's papers, books, documents, records, correspondence, electronic communications, and any and other tangible things to examine and inspect. Such examination and inspection may include subpoenas to comply, the compel the production of papers, books, documents, records, correspondence, electronic communications, and other tangible things. The examination and inspection inspection of a marijuana business or licensee may also include the interview of material witnesses, agents, or other persons whom the Marijuana Commission has determined is involved in the financing, management, or operation of the marijuana business. B, administrative subpoenas. The Marijuana Commission may, during an inspection or investigation and prior to any hearing issue, modify, amend, or resent subpoenas. Material witnesses, agents, or other persons whom the Marijuana Commission has determined are involved in the financing, management, or operation of marijuana business may petition the Commission to modify, amend, or resent subpoenas. C, General Provisions. Administrative subpoenas for compliance and inspection purposes shall be issued in the name of the Commission by the Commission. Service shall be made by certified mail. D, enforcement of subpoenas. On the failure of a marijuana business licensee or other person reasonably to comply with the subpoena, the Commission may apply to the tribal court for an order to comply, comply, compliance with the subpoena. In order in order for costs and fees associated with the issuance and enforcement of the subpoena. Or in order of contempt for any failure by a party to comply with the court order. E, the failure to reasonably cooperate with this section may result in administrative or disciplinary action against a marijuana business or licensee, including but not limited to license suspension, revocation, or fines. And be it further ordained that the foregoing amendment to the Marijuana Control Ordinance shall go into effect immediately and shall supersede, repel, and replace all prior inconsistent laws of the Ogallisu Tribe certification. Okay.
Hey, go ahead. Question.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, um, on reading this, it sounds like the Commission will be responsible for issuing the subpoena. Is that correct? And then then the court gets involved too, or does the, does the court kind of like enforce the subpoena? Is that what, that, that the way this is written?
As, um, so the Commission, whatever they findings, then they'll set that meeting guard, they'll set that date up with the courts. So whatever they find, then they take that step of setting up with the courts, whether they subpoena or whatever they found. Further more.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Councilman Little Dog. Oh, all recognize. Councilman Little Dog at eleven eleven.
So my question is in regards to, um, this see to sale tracking system. Currently, um, we have businesses that are operating without the see to sale tracking system and personally that, that's jeopardizing our whole industry. And I went to EB and D and I asked them, you know, that we make them mandate that all the dispensaries are under this tracking system within thirty days. Or shut them down because you could have individuals bringing product from off the reservation and there's no way to track it at this time. So I think we need to put the hammer down on it and I think the committee took action to incorporate that thirty-day notice somewhere, but I don't think I see it anywhere on the agenda. So I think for us to protect this industry and, and and the businesses, that we need to take some type of action that you know, all these businesses are how to this tracking system or they be shut down until they are. Um, and that's just that's just thinking about the whole industry and worrying about it. So I don't know, George, I don't know if you incorporated that anywhere or you brought it up, but I remember they passed it in EB and D at the last meeting.
I believe that was passed the last resolution.
So does that mean that the ones that ain't on it, or they have, how do they address that? Because because EB and D gave them a thirty day notice to get under the biochan. My understanding, once this ordinance was passed, but it's not written into the law. So if that's immediately, does that mean like today? So then, okay.
Answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay. We have motion on the floor. We have a motion by Councilman Dreamer, second by Councilman Dillon. Call for the vote.
Howard Brooks?
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior? Tyler Yellowboy?
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior?
Yes.
James Cross? Anna Halverson?
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo?
Yeah.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Robin Tapio?
Yes.
David Poyer? Sonia Littlehawk Weston? Jackie Sears? Garfield Littledog? John Steele Senior? Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Thirteen yes, two not voting. Motion carried.
I'd like to turn over the next agenda items to Council Vice Chair Councilman Youngman.
Thank you, Chair. Resolution of the Ogallisoo Tribal Council of the Ogallisoo Tribe approving amendment to the owner's representative project management services contract with Versatile Construction Solutions in connection with the Ogallisoo Tribe Public Works Project, which was approved by ordinance number twenty-two dash fifty-three A. Whereas the Ogallisoo Tribe adopted its constitution and bylaws by referendum vote on December fourteenth nineteen thirty-five. In accordance with Section sixteen of the Indian Reorganization Act of nineteen thirty-four twenty-five USC subsection five one two three. And under Article three of the Constitution, the Ogallisoo Tribal Council is the governing body of the Ogallisoo Tribe. And whereas Article four, sections one F, one K, one M, and one W of the tribal constitution empowered the tribal council to manage the economic affairs of the tribe, protect and preserve property. The property of the tribe adopt laws governing the conduct of persons on the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation and adopt laws protecting and promoting the health and general welfare of the tribe and its members. And whereas by ordinance number twenty-two dash fifty-three A, June twenty-ninth twenty twenty-two, the tribal council set aside fifteen point two million from the tribe's payments from the coronavirus state fiscal recovery fund, FRF, under the American Rescue Plan, ARP Act. Public law one one seven dash two, March eleventh twenty twenty-one, for Ogallisoo Tribe Public Works Project to provide stormwater management access to public healthcare and workforce development on the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation. And whereas the resolution number twenty-two dash one four seven, the tribal council approved a contract between the tribe and Versatile Construction Solutions Incorporated to provide owners' representative services in connection with the Ogallisoo Tribe Public Works Project. And whereas a copy of the fully executed contract, which is entitled Owner's Representative Agreement for the Ogallisoo Tribe Stormwater Public Works Project dated October fourth twenty twenty-two, is attached to this resolution. Whereas the contract provides that it shall end on December thirty-first twenty twenty-three, but it may be extended if agreed to in writing by the parties. And whereas on December first twenty twenty-three, and December twenty-second twenty twenty-three, the Economic and Business Development Committee by motion and vote recommended approval of an amendment to the contract to extend its term thirty-first twenty twenty-four on the same terms and conditions as the original contract. Now therefore be it resolved that the Ogallisoo Tribal Council does hereby approve the attached amendment to the Ogallisoo Tribe's Contract with Versatile Construction Solutions Incorporated, which is entitled Owner's Representative Agreement for the Ogallisoo Tribe Stormwater Public Works Project to extend the term of the contract through December thirty-first twenty twenty-four on the same terms and conditions as the original contract. And be it further resolved that the tribal president is authorized and directed to enter the said amendment for owner's representative services for the project. And be it further resolved that the source of funds for the said amendment shall be the tribe's payments from the coronavirus state fiscal recovery fund under the American Rescue Plan Act. Public Law one one seven dash two, March eleventh twenty twenty-one. Certification motion.
We've got motion by Councilman Youngman, second by Councilman Watkins. Call for the vote.
Howard Brooks?
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior?
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy? Wendell Youngman Junior?
Yes.
James Cross? Anna Halverson?
No.
Ella Giancarlo?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior?
No.
Robin Tapio?
No.
David Poyer? Sonia Littlehawk Weston? Jackie Sears? Garfield Littledog?
Yeah.
John Steele Senior? Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Eleven, yes, three no, one not voting. Motion carried.
Okay, moving on. Number five. Resolution of the Ogallisoo Tribal Council of the Ogallisoo Tribe approving an extension of Brandon Bracino's appointment as the Acting General Manager of the Prairie Winds Casino for additional ninety days at a salary of a hundred thousand dollars. Whereas the Ogallisoo Tribe is a sovereign tribal nation that has entered into treaties as a supreme law of the land, which the United States government pursuant to the US Constitution, Article six is a signatory to the Treaty of Fort Laramie of eighteen fifty-one, one stat seven four nine, and the Treaty of Fort Laramie of eighteen sixty-eight, fifteen stat six three five, and continues the nation-to-nation relationship with the federal government. And whereas Ogallisoo Tribe organized under Section sixteen of the Indian Reorganization Act of nineteen thirty-four twenty-five USC subsection five one two three, by adopting a federally approved constitution and bylaws and under Article three of the tribal constitution, the Ogallisoo Tribal Council is the governing body of the tribe. And whereas Article four, sections one F, one K, one M, and one W empowered the tribal council to manage the economic affairs of the tribe, protect and preserve the property of the tribe, adopt laws governing the conduct of persons on the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation, and adopt laws protecting and promoting the health and general welfare of the Ogallisoo Tribe and its membership. And whereas the General Manager of the Prairie Wind Casino resigned, leaving the position vacant. And whereas Brandon Bracino was appointed to serve as the Acting General Manager for the Prairie Wind Casino while the General Manager position is advertised. And whereas the new manager has not yet been retained. And whereas the OST Economic and Business Development Committee took action on December twenty-second twenty twenty-two to extend the appointment, I believe that's supposed to be twenty twenty-three, correct? So Stacy, with that change, it'll be December twenty-second twenty twenty-three. To extend the appointment of Brandon Bracino to serve as the Acting General Manager for the Prairie Wind Casino for additional ninety days at a salary of a hundred thousand dollars commencing on December twentieth twenty twenty-three and recommends approval. Now therefore be resolved that the Ogallisoo Tribal Council does hereby approve the appointment of Brandon Bracino as the Acting General Manager of the Prairie Winds Casino for ninety days at a salary of a hundred thousand dollars commencing on December twentieth twenty twenty-three. Certification motion.
Question?
And that hundred thousand, is that per annum or is that for the ninety days?
That's just for the ninety days. Probably now he's not getting for the it just moved his wages up, so it's per annum, but.
Okay, you need to clarify what.
And I think we can insert that, we can insert that in there.
Per annum?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, thank you. Also recognize Councilman Goldspear, eleven twenty-five. Question, Councilman Dillon?
Is that still being advertised stays or is it?
Yes, it is. We do have three applicants currently.
Can we make, I'd like to make a motion that in two weeks, we have a special meeting to select a general manager. That's my motion.
Yes, yes, we already have motion on the floor. Slow down, slow down.
Okay, so you need.
It's a double barrel motion.
So who is the second? Did we get a second? Okay, Councilman Yellowboy's second. Question, go ahead, Councilman Little Dog.
So if we're interviewing in two weeks, does that, do we have to wait till this appointment expired in ninety days? Or should we change the resolution to the positions filled?
Until filled.
Because it wouldn't make sense to hire this guy for another ninety days and then hire someone in two weeks.
Is that good? Okay, so what the amendment?
We can accept an amendment in the resolution. Preanna, if you could change it.
Call for the vote.
Howard Brooks?
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior?
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy?
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior?
Yes.
James Cross? Anna Halverson?
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Robin Tapio?
Yes.
David Poyer? Don Regosbear? Sonia Littlehawk Weston? Jackie Sears? Garfield Littledog? John Steele Senior? Craig Dillon?
Fifteen yes, one not voting. Motion carried.
Okay, next one.
Okay, so Councilman Dillon, go ahead with your motion.
Make a motion. We have a special council meeting in two weeks, within the next two weeks to hire a general manager for the Prairie Winds Casino.
Okay, second by Councilwoman Tapio. Call for the vote.
Howard Brooks?
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior?
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy?
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior?
Yes.
James Cross?
Yes.
Anna Halverson?
No.
Ella Giancarlo?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Robin Tapio?
Yes.
David Poyer? Don Regosbear? Sonia Littlehawk Weston? Jackie Sears? Garfield Littledog? John Steele Senior? Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Councilman Dillon, and that, your motion is for both casinos, right?
Did, I gotta ask her a question. Is there applicants for East Winds?
Was it just?
That's what.
The three that I have are for, oh, sorry, the three that I had were for Prairie Wind Casino.
Yeah, that's what I thought, so. But please let us know when you get applicants for the East Wind as well, would you?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so fourteen yes, one no, one not voting. Motion carried.
Okay, next one. Resolution of Ogallisoo Tribal Council of the Ogallisoo Tribe approving extension of Roger Brinkson Back's appointment as the Acting General Manager of East Wind Casino for additional ninety days. Whereas Ogallisoo Tribe is a sovereign tribal nation that has entered into treaties as the supreme law of the land to the United States government pursuant to the US Constitution, Article six. And is a signatory to the Treaty of Fort Laramie of eighteen fifty-one, one stat seven four nine, September seventeenth eighteen fifty-one, and the Treaty of Fort Laramie of eighteen sixty-eight, fifteen stat six thirty-five, April twenty-ninth eighteen sixty-eight. It continues the nation-to-nation relationship with the federal government. Whereas the Ogallisoo Tribe organized under Section sixteen of the Indian Reorganization Act of nineteen thirty-four twenty-five USC subsection five one two three, by adopting a federally approved constitution and bylaws and under Article three of the tribal constitution, Ogallisoo Tribal Council is the governing body of the tribe. Whereas Article four, sections one F, one K, one M, and one W empower the tribal council to manage the economic affairs of the tribe, protect and preserve the property of the tribe, adopt laws governing the conduct of persons on the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation, and adopt laws protecting, promoting the health and general welfare of the Ogallisoo Tribe and its membership. And whereas Roger Brinkson Back was appointed to serve as the Acting General Manager for the East Wind Casino while the general manager position is advertised. And whereas any general manager has not yet been retained. Whereas the OST Economic and Business Development Committee took action on December twenty-second twenty twenty-two to extend the appointment of Roger Brinkson Back to serve as the Acting General Manager for the East Wind Casino for additional ninety days starting January fourth twenty twenty-four and recommends approval. Now therefore be resolved that the Ogallisoo Tribal Council does hereby approve the appointment of Roger Brinkson Back as the Acting General Manager of the East Wind, it says Prairie Wind, which should be East Wind, the East Wind Casino for ninety days commencing on January forty, January fourth twenty twenty-four when this current appointment ends. Motion.
Motion by Councilman Dreamer, second by Councilman Youngman. Councilman Goldspear? Call for vote.
Howard Brooks?
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior? Tyler Yellowboy?
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior?
Yes.
James Cross?
No.
Anna Halverson?
Yeah.
Ella Giancarlo? George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Robin Tapio?
Yes.
David Poyer? Don Regosbear?
Yes.
Sonia Littlehawk Weston? Jackie Sears? Garfield Littledog? John Steele Senior? Craig Dillon?
No.
Thirteen yes, two no, one not voting. Motion carried.
That's it. Thank you, Council.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to the next agenda item, Law and Order. Moving on to the next agenda item, Law and Order, I'll turn it over to committee chair.
Thank you. Go ahead and um. Secretary, could you go ahead and read it, please?
Ordinance of the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council of the Oglala Sioux Tribe and Unincorporated Tribe. Ordinance of the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council amending ordinance number sixteen dash twenty-two to authorize the Tribal Council to. Exclude and banish persons convicted of homicide and dangerous drug offenses from the Pineridge Indian Reservation. Whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe is a sovereign tribal nation that has entered into treaties as a supreme law of the land. With the United States government pursuant to the US Constitution Article. Six and a signatory to the Treaty of Fort Laramie of eighteen fifty-one, one stat seven four nine, September seventeenth, eighteen fifty-one. And the Treaty of Fort Laramie of eighteen sixty-eight, fifteen stats six three five, April twenty-ninth, eighteen sixty-eight. And continues the nation-to-nation relationship with the federal government. And whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe organized under section sixteen. Of the Indian Reorganization Act of nineteen thirty-four, twenty-five USC subsection five one two three. By adopting federally approved constitution and bylaws and under Article Three of the Tribal Constitution, the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council is a governing body of the Oglala. Of the tribe. And whereas Article. Four subsections one K of the Tribal Constitution vests the Tribal Council with the authority to promulgate and enforce ordinances governing the conduct of persons. On the Pineridge Indian Reservation and providing for the maintenance of law and order and the administration of justice by establishing a reservation court. And defining its duties and powers. And whereas Article. Four, subsection, or section one W of the Tribal Constitution vests the Tribal Council. With the authority to adopt laws protecting and promoting the health and general welfare of the. Oglala Sioux Tribe and its membership. And whereas Article Four, Section one I. Of the Tribal Constitution vests the Tribal Council with the authority to remove trespassers and exclude and banish persons. From within the boundaries of the Pineridge Indian Reservation. And whereas in the exercise of these authorities, the Tribal. Council enacted Chapter Ten. Of the Law and Order Code to establish laws and procedures for the exclusion and removal. Of non-members from the Pineridge Indian Reservation and other lands of the tribe and. The Tribal Council amended those laws and procedures in ordinance number fifteen dash twenty-five, December twenty eighteen. Twenty, December twenty eighth, two thousand fifteen. Ordinance number twenty-two dash zero five, January twelfth, twenty twenty, and ordinance number twenty-two dash fifty-six. July twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two. And whereas the Tribal Council enacted ordinance sixteen. Dash twenty-two, August twenty-third, twenty sixteen, to establish laws and procedures for the exclusion and removal from the reservation. And other lands of the tribe, persons convicted of crimes involving the manufacture, distribution, and possession. With intent to distribute dangerous drugs, including methamphetamine. And the Tribal Council amended those laws and procedures in ordinance number twenty-two dash twenty, February sixteenth, twenty twenty-two. And ordinance number twenty-three dash thirteen, March thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. And whereas the branch of government primarily responsible for implementing ordinance number sixteen. As amended, is the Oglala Sioux Tribal Court. But inadequate funding and inadequate judicial, judicial resources. Have undermined the ability of the court to implement ordinance number sixteen twenty-two. And whereas as a result, the tribe continues to endure extraordinary harms caused on the reservation and other lands by the tribe. By the manufacturer, distribution, possession with intent to distribute and use of dangerous drugs, including methamphetamine. And whereas the Law and Order Committee of the Tribal Council has determined that it is necessary to amend ordinance number sixteen twenty-two. As amended to authorize the Tribal Council to issue orders of exclusion and banishment for persons convicted of crimes. Involve, involving the manufacturer, distribution, and possession with intent to distribute dangerous drugs, including methamphetamine. And whereas there is a significant increase in violent crime on the reservation resulting in seriously. Serious bodily injury or death. And the Law and Order Committee has determined that it is necessary to amend ordinance number sixteen twenty-two, as amended. To authorize the Tribal Court and the Tribal Councils to issue orders of exclusion and banishment for persons convicted of homicide. And whereas many individuals who are charged with, but not yet convicted of. Drug offenses or homicide are released pending trial and continue to pose a threat to the safety, health, and welfare of individuals. Families and reservation communities. And whereas the Law and Order Committee has determined that it isn't necessary to amend ordinance. Number sixteen twenty-two, as amended, to authorize the Tribal Council. To exclude and banish from the reservation any person who is charged with, but not yet convicted of. The commission of a dangerous drug offense or homicide. And who poses a threat to the general welfare, health, and safety of the tribe or its members. As long as the Tribal Council follows the notice and hearing procedures for administrative hearings set forth. In Chapter Ten of the Law and Order Code. And whereas the Law and Order Committee has drafted a revised exclusion and removal code of the Oglala Sioux Tribe that. Includes all of these amendments and by motion and vote on January tenth, twenty twenty-four. The committee recommended the code to the Tribal Council for its review and approval. And whereas the Tribal Council has determined that approval and adoption of this ordinance. And the revised exclusion and removal code of the Oglala Sioux Tribe is in the best interests of the tribe and its members. Now therefore be ordained that the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council hereby approves and adopt. The attached exclusion and removal code of the Oglala Sioux Tribe and be further ordained. That the attached exclusion and removal code of the Oglala Sioux Tribe shall go into effect on the date this ordinance is enacted. And shall supersede any prior inconsistent laws and procedures of the exclusion and banishment of persons from. The Pineridge Indian Reservation. Certification.
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Watkins, second by Councilman Carlo. Or you had a question, go ahead.
I, I, I will second, but I just had a quick question is. I, I don't know if it should be in here, if there should be something separate, I don't know, but um. What about for individuals who harbor these people? You know, there needs to be consequences for those individuals as well. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Um, it's in here. I also spoke with Garfield yesterday and he, he was recommending a, a change. To the procedures in section two point six of the code. Section D. And to remove the uh. Time period uh that the legal department has to provide. The list of names to the tribal secretary. So if that's okay with you guys, I will remove. Uh, the language that says on or before the first Tuesday of the month. In section two point six subsection D.
Go ahead, Councilman.
The reason why I recommended that is because, because of technicalities, we use those to say, oh, we didn't file. That person's name because it wasn't in on Tuesday. And I don't, cause in the same section, it gives the um notice to the individual. Third Tuesday of the month. A notice has to go to the um. Individual for a hearing. But to put that first Tuesday in there, I think that technicality will, will push. A whole. Hearing back one month if, if a person's name wasn't submitted by that Tuesday. So I thought it was important that we just leave that first Tuesday out and allow them to submit. Up to the time that they, they um have to have notice for a hearing. That, that's, that was why I requested that.
All right, Councilwoman Little Hawk Weston.
You know, I think I also was talking to some of the council about, um, I think we said, um. This should somehow affect even the land. Part of it, and I don't know, I know we did address it, but I was going to maybe. Um, I don't know if we should bring it up here or um take it back through land committee. But you know, a lot of times we have uh. Drug dealers or drug users coming to us and signing off on tribal leases. And you know, recently, you know, I was informed that, you know, we had one that was picked up in our district. And um, and he was given a, I don't know if it's uh under his name, but a land tribal lease. And to me, I really get concerned about things like that because we talked about safe communities in our districts and. You know, I think that Robin has always addressed that. And right now, we're giving leases to uh, uh, felons, convicted felons. With uh, that were convicted of drugs or whatever dangerous, violent. They uh are doing, so today I'm gonna speak out on behalf of my uh district. Because they also see that and, you know, does, you know. We're really looking at banishment. You know, and our people, you know, have. You know, people out there that convict, are convicted, you know, and yeah, they probably went and, you know, done their. Time and, you know, come back and some are living, uh, you know, good, they. You know, we say, well, they learned from it and they're moving forward in their lives and make it better. Yes, we have those kinds of tribal members too, but we still have a lot of them that are not doing that. And they're not living like that, but they're bringing it back into our communities and we, we as tribal council need to look at that because. Um, you know, how do we uh catch it? Because uh, and I think maybe our land office also needs to be aware. You know, Mr. Richards is, um, you know, some of these ones were, they'll come to us and want a lease here or whatever in our district and we sign it. And, and yet, when this happens, it really concerns me. That uh, we're signing off on leases and, and letting them live in our communities and yet they're, they're selling. And, and, and our communities are no longer safe. So today I'm just gonna speak out on that, uh, I don't know, counsel, if we should. Uh, maybe take that back to land committee and maybe uh dress that with the land office. But I really think that has to be uh touched on. Because uh, right now, I'm like uh the rest of you, you know, we got safe communities, so we need to put our foot down now. And we need to start holding our own tribal members, we can't give you a lease, no longer a lease. Because this is what you've done. And so today I just wanted to share that because some of my district members, community members brought that up to me, so. You know, I just wanted to say that today, so if we could bring that back, uh, Rayanne, what is your recommendation on that?
I think we probably should have some further discussion on all of that part. So, yeah.
Okay, we'll do that then.
Councilwoman Sears and Councilman Cross.
Yeah, I think um, you know, when we, when you read this, it, it talks about convicted homicide. And drug, dangerous drug offenses. But. How do we define, define dangerous drugs? Does that just, is that just methamphetamine? So I know when we discussed this before, I thought it was for all. Drug offenses, but it just says methamphetamine and I thought cocaine and. Beteinol and all that was included, but I don't, that's why I want it to be defined. And also I had another um question or concern on the um. Article twelve of the Tribal Constitution. Just to. Let the people know that. You know, the, they want to see if they get, uh, what do you call that, due process? And it does state that in this ordinance, right? That they do.
Yes, notice and hearing is due process.
Okay, I just wanted to say that because, you know, last time I got calls on this and when it first came up and. They were asking about, you know, our tribal constitution, you guys need to give due process and. I, you know, I'm, I'm pretty sure that um, you know, we are. And um, I just wanted to let them know that there is due process for people to plead their case, you know. So anyway, that's my question, but I do want that defined to state that on this ordinance.
Councilman Cross.
Thank you, Chair. My comment is um, on section one dash three grounds for, grounds for exclusion. And this applies to all the non-members. And there's a A through R, which. How can we get this information to? The non-members, I, I know we have a website, right? That, that can be used to um. Post it on there, so that way they can get a better understanding of, of our, of our sovereignty, of our. You know, of our, our culture and things they can't do. And I think it's important that they, that, that they do this because I know this has been ongoing for many years, you know, and um. Not respecting uh, the tribe, you know, so if, if this is something that can get, if we can put that out there. Um, because uh. If you look at some of this stuff, you know, it does, it does, you know. We all know someone that probably did something like that, like this, that should have been excluded, you know, from this tribe, you know. But I just wanted to make that comment if that was possible, or what would be the, what would be the process to, to implement this into the uh. You know, some type of public notice or something, you know, so, thank you.
Okay, online, uh, we have Steve Gunn on Zoom.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, in response to Ms. Sears' question, the. Uh, dangerous drug is defined to include any Schedule One or Schedule Two drug under the Controlled Substances Act, so. It would include methamphetamine, but it would include every other Schedule One or Schedule Two drug, there are two exceptions. And they are peyote and cannabis. Unless they are mixed or laced with other Schedule One or Schedule Two substances. Um, and in response to Mr. Cross's question, it, it might be a good idea to publish this in the newspaper. To authorize the secretary to, to publish the whole ordinance. Uh, at least one time following adoption. It, it can go into effect immediately, but you can still publish it.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Councilman.
So, Rayanne, are we addressing enforcement in this ordinance? I mean, cause unfortunately, um, I got a message from someone that. They said, uh. They heard I'm directing people to go to jail if they're. If they're banished and, and, you know, the statements are never made, but I, I wanted to know is if there's enforcement. Um, written in, into this, how it's gonna be enforced? Because I hate to have a document with no enforcement.
So section two dash eight enforcement and exclusion of banishment orders. Um, subsection C, the Oglala Sioux Tribe Department of Public Safety shall keep and maintain an up-to-date list of all persons. Whose removal, exclusion, and or banishment from the reservation has been ordered by the Tribal Court or the Tribal Council. All patrol officers shall keep the list on their person or in their patrol vehicles while on duty. And such officers shall enforce and execute removal, exclusion, and banishment orders against any person whose name appears. On the list consistent with the terms of the orders.
Okay, secretary. Call for the vote. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we had two questions, okay. Let me um, uh, get the Councilman Goldsberg, then Councilwoman Halverson.
Sure, that was just my question, I was going enforcement, it was like, are we gonna enforce this issue? Since we're so wrapped up with many issues on the law and order side, so, but Rayanne explained it, so, thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Halverson.
You know, I just, I feel like there's just more discussion that we have to add to this banishment ordinance. A lot of unanswered questions, a lot of unanswered um, thoughts on this, and I know it's been a discussion and committee for a long time. And I know even like the. And I know even like the chief of police, he had questions on how this is going to affect his officers, how they're going to enforce it, where they're going to drop off these individuals who are banished from the tribe. If it's in the wintertime, where do they take them to the state line and leave them there when during a blizzard? And so he had a lot of questions and I wish um, during this discussion that uh, the chief of police was here to answer those type of questions too, because he was also lost on that. And I also have, you know, concerns on the banishment of um, some of these individuals, especially those who are convicted of these offenses, because a lot of times they would go to, you know, prison and they'd serve their sentence and during that prison term, they, you know, change their life around. You know, maybe they went in as a young boy and or young woman and um, found, you know, the light of, you know, Tunca Shila or, you know, changed their life around because I do see a lot of mentors out there that went through these um, criminal, that were criminally charged, but when they've come out of the system, um, they're different. They have spirituality, they found spirituality. And so how do we keep them banished for what they've learned? And becoming law-abiding citizens? You know, I think the major part of one question that's kind of concerned me too is, you know, when um, Donroy brought up the land issues, do they lose their land rights? Do they lose their enrollment? You know, what is the consequences of the banishment? And those are some questions I think our people also have out there. So I don't know if Mr. Gunn can answer those or, you know, but I'd like to hear about that.
Go ahead, uh, Steve.
As, as it's written, um, Ms. Alveson, they would not be disenrolled, so they wouldn't lose tribal membership. And there's nothing in here that would dispossess a person of land. They, they would not lose either membership or land.
You know, I just, like I said, you know, I just have a lot of concerns of banishing people who've really changed their life around. And I just think there needs to be more discussion on this and I support, support a lot of the issues on getting rid of the criminals on the reservation. But I just feel like we need to discuss this before we amend it and amend it and amend, amend it over and over. And so, you know, I would like, like it to go back to committee, like it to go back to land committee, go to law and order committee and have these discussions.
Councilwoman Tapio.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I'm speaking on behalf of my district, Pine Ridge Village, which is in a lot of turmoil right now. And this banishment is in the infancy stages. We need to start somewhere. We can fine tune it down the road and we can look out for those that, that change their lives around and turn their lives around. I know I was a recovering addict and alcoholic. I know that. But you know what? Right now, we're in a state of crisis here and we have to do something, especially in my district here. So this is one step toward letting people know that we mean business and that we're going to do what we say. So I think that we need to put this in place and then as we go along, we can do addendums and we can do amendments to it. Thank you. Motion.
Go ahead, Councilman.
I'm just going to do a motion to table until we could get our chief of police here to, um, you know, if I don't get a second, I don't.
Okay, so we also have a, a motion to table. Do we have a second? Motion, second, we got a second by Councilman Goldsberry. Secretary, call for the vote.
Howard Rooks.
Not voting.
Austin Hawkins Senior. Tyler Yellowboy. Wesley Hawkins Senior. Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yes.
No.
To table.
Oh, no. No, sorry.
James Cross.
No.
Anna Halverson.
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo.
No.
George Jimmer Junior. Robin Tapio.
No.
David Poyer. Donroy Goldsberry. Sonia Little Hawk Weston.
Yeah.
Jackie Sears.
Yeah.
Garfield Little Doug.
Nope.
John Steele Senior.
No.
Craig Dillon.
No.
Two yes, twelve no, three now voting. Motion failed.
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion to approve by Councilwoman Tapio, second by Councilman Little Dog. All for the vote.
Wesley Hawkins Senior. Howard Rooks.
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior. Tyler Yellowboy.
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yes.
James Cross.
Yes.
Anna Halverson.
No.
Ella Giancarlo.
Yes.
George Jimmer Junior.
No.
Robin Tapio.
Yes.
David Poyer. Donroy Goldsberry.
No.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston.
Ha.
Jackie Sears.
Oh, huh.
Garfield Little Doug.
Yep.
John Steele Senior. Craig Dillon.
Go ahead, Councilman.
Uh, yes, tribal council, we had this banishment in previous years. We had in Pine Ridge here, two brothers. They had the young ones out, standing on the curbs, giving different gang signs to cars driving by. And it was just all over Pine Ridge here. The court banished the older brother. And the younger brother that was uh, in on this went up and got his gang tattoos removed. He published in the newspaper that he would no longer be any gang related. And he publicly turned around his life. The mother came to see me on the older brother that was banished. And she pleaded that we take the banishment off him because he could not make it off reservation. And so I did send her to a committee to explain to them why they needed the banishment off. And he turned around his life. Just for your information. Thank you.
President.
Yes, go ahead, Councilman.
Just wanted to ca- real quickly comment what uh, uh, Councilman Steele just said is I was going through some paperwork, I think during those terms, uh, and I remember I come across a, a news article. And what Councilman Steele is talking about was the story of that young man. And it was written in the paper. So I do know that they'll change, some will turn their lives around, you know, and they did a story on him. And this is back when the, when gangs were really starting to happen on our reservation. I think some of us been in council for, during those times too, you know, when gangs were real prevalent here in, on the reservation. So just wanted to share that. But yeah, thanks, Don, for bringing that up.
Councilwoman Tapio.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just real briefly, I want to share with you that, you know, when Mr. Steele and I went to all the task, meth, task force meetings, we visited all nine districts and that was one of the topics of discussion at the, at the meetings. The people did want banishment and that's why we brought it forward. I'm also part of the neighborhood watch, um, that the housing just started and is implementing lately. And I was surprised, we had a meeting last Thursday out here at Sacred Heart and there were twenty-five people there from this community, which is really good because it shows you that people are ready to do something about it, you know? So, so I just wanted to share that with the people because I think that we really need to be proactive on this. Thank you.
Councilwoman Alveson.
Now I'll be really quick too. Um, all I gotta say is a long time ago, things like this took a lot of time to work out. And I see a lot of things that come through council that are rushed and we have to work on later. And there's a lot of things that come, that we deal with even now that um, we can't even fix because it's already been passed. So, you know, I just think that should have took more time. Thank you.
Councilman Dillon.
We have a really bad uh, problem on this reservation and it's uh, drugs. And we seem to sugarcoat that now and ever now and then. We have thirty murders on this reservation that are directly or indirectly related to meth. And that's what we should be looking at. And we have individuals that continue to deal drugs on this reservation is what we really need to focus on. We need to give them no safe haven. And the people that bring them into their homes and allow this to happen, they need to be evicted as well. Because it isn't doing us any good to uh, allow this to continue because do we want forty, fifty, sixty homicides? I don't. And recently we had a, a incident in Kyle that should wake everybody up. A house was shot up and an individual was killed. And yet, here we are, uh, taking ten, fifteen extra minutes on this issue. Mr. Chairman, can we move on? Thank you.
Yes, I just want to remind you, lunch is also ready, so um, uh, we'll finish up. We'll try to get through uh, law and order and then break for lunch.
All right, ready?
Yes, yes.
Okay, go on to number three. Ordinance of Oglala Sioux Tribal Council, Oglala Sioux Tribe, amend in Braden's law enacted by ordinance number zero six dash sixteen, as amended by ordinance number zero seven dash thirty-nine by adding the Oglala Lakota Housing Security for Animal Control within the OLHA housing areas. Whereas Oglala Sioux Tribe is sovereign tribal nation that has entered into treaties as supreme law of the land with the United States government pursuant to U.S. Constitution, Article six, and is a signatory to Treaty of Fort Laramie, eighteen fifty-one, one statute, seven forty-nine, September seventeenth, eighteen fifty-one, and the Treaty of Fort Laramie of eighteen sixty-eight, fifteen statute, six thirty-five, April not twenty-ninth, eighteen sixty-eight, and continues nation to nation
Yeah, builder.
relationship with the federal government and where, whereas Oglala Sioux Tribe organized under Section sixteen of Indian Reorganization Act nineteen thirty-four, twenty-five U.S.C., subsection fifty-one, twenty-three, by adopting a federal approved constitution by laws under Article three of our tribal constitutional Oglala Sioux Tribal Councils are governed by a tribe, whereas under Article six, section one F, one K, one M, and one W empower the tribal council manage that cannot appear to the tribe, protect the, and preserve the property of tribe, adopt laws governing and conduct of persons on the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation, adopt laws protecting, promoting the health and general welfare of Oglala Sioux tribes and membership. Whereas on July twenty-fifth, two thousand and six, the tribal council enacted Braden's law prohibiting residents of a Pine Ridge Indian Reservation from owning and altered or pre- or part-mix pit bull, rottweiler, or doberman Pinscher, or any dogs that attacks, bites, attempts to bite, or chase an individual or individuals impose a criminal penalties for violation of the law. And whereas on August seventh, twenty, two thousand and seven, tribal council amended Braden's law to acquire the OST Department of Public Safety, OST Department of Animal Control immediately confiscate and destroy any unal- unaltered or part-mix pit bull, rottweiler, doberman pinscher, or other vicious dogs, or any other vicious animal in a human, humane manner. And whereas there is an increase in the number of stray dogs and prohibited dogs that are a threat to safety of individuals across the reservation with the OST Department of Animal Control no longer in operation due to lack of funding and the OST Department of Public Safety understaffed for law enforcement officers assist with animal control. And whereas Oglala Lakota Housing Authority can assist with enforcement within the housing area under their control. And whereas OST Law and Order Committee has reviewed the proposed amendment, the recommendations, tribal council approval and adoption now, therefore be ordained in that Oglala Sioux Tribal Council does hereby adopt the proposed amendment to Braden's law enacted by ordinance number zero six dash sixteen, as amended by ordinance number zero seven dash thirty-nine by adding Oglala Lakota Housing Authority security for animal control within the OLHA housing areas. And be it further ordained, that this order shall take effect immediately and shall supersede, repeal, and replace all prior inconsistent laws of Oglala Sioux Tribe. Motion.
Okay, we got a motion by Councilman Watkins, second by Councilwoman Tapio. Secretary, call for the vote.
Howard Rooks.
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior.
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy.
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yes.
James Cross. Anna Halverson.
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo.
Yes.
George Jimmer Junior.
Yes.
Robin Tapio.
Yes.
David Poyer. Donroy Goldsberry. Sonia Little Hawk Weston.
Ha.
Jackie Sears.
Oh, huh.
Garfield Little Doug. John Steele Senior.
Yes.
Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Fifteen yes, two now voting. Motion carried. Question, go Councilwoman Tapio. And also let's recognize uh, Councilman Hawkins at eleven forty-eight.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, my question is in regards to the agenda, item number two under um, why we moved it? We didn't do item number two? Is that correct?
That, that was, didn't make the agenda last time. Remember, Robin, they charted down last council.
She just forgot to remove it. Okay, thank you.
Councilman Hawkins. Got it. Oh, okay.
I apologize for that.
Chairman. On the next one, um, I'm gonna have Sonia read it.
Okay.
Okay, um, resolution of the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council of the Oglala Sioux Tribe and unincorporated tribe. Resolution of the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council of the Oglala Sioux Tribe, appointing Ja- Jobe, I think it's Sarah Braun, as Associate Justice to the Oglala Sioux Nation Supreme Court. Whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe is a sovereign tribal nation that has entered into treaties as the supreme law of the land with the United States government pursuant to the U.S. Constitution, Article four, and is a signatory to the Treaty of Fort Laramie of eighteen fifty-one, one, one statute, seven four nine, September seventeenth, eighteen fifty-one, and the Treaty of Fort Laramie of eighteen sixty-eight, fifteen statute, six thirty-five, April twenty-ninth, eighteen sixty-eight, and continues the nation-to-nation relationship with the federal government. And whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe adopt- And whereas Ogallawasoo Tribe adopted its constitution and bylaws by referendum vote on December fourteenth nineteen thirty-five in accordance with section sixteen of the Indian Reorganization Act of nineteen thirty-four twenty-five USC subsection five, one, two, three. And under Article Three of the Ogallawasoo Tribe's Constitution, the Ogallawasoo Tribal Council is the governing body of the Ogallawasoo Tribe. And whereas Article Five, Section One of the OST Constitution created and vested judicial power in one supreme court as established by the tribal council. And whereas Article Four, Section K empowers the tribal council to establish a reservation court and define its duties and powers. And whereas OST Tribal Council met on October fourth, twenty twenty-three and conducted interviews of qualified candidates and approved the appointment of Job Sarah Brown as alternate justice of the Supreme Court of the Ogallawasoo Nation. And whereas on November fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, the Law and Order Committee received Associate Justice Gordon Swanson's resignation and recommends moving alternate justice Job Sarah Brown into the vacant Associate Justice position. Now therefore be it resolved that the Ogallawasoo Tribal Council hereby removes Job Sarah Brown from the alternate justice position and appoints him to serve as an Associate Justice of the Supreme Court of the Ogallawasoo Nation. And be it further resolved that Job Sarah Brown shall serve in that position for a six-year term beginning on the date of this resolution and continuing until October fourth, twenty twenty-nine. Be it further resolved that Job Sarah Brown shall be compensated at the rate of seventy-five dollars per hour plus mileage at a prevailing federal rate for those cases in which he sits as a member of the Supreme Court or otherwise performs duties of his office subject to availability or funding in the budget of the Supreme Court. Be it further resolved that the tribal council hereby delegates authority to the tribal president or in his absence, the vice president to sign this resolution and to execute any documents necessary to effectuate Associate Justice Job Sarah Brown's appointment to the Supreme Court of the Ogallawasoo Nation. Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilwoman Little Hawk Weston, a second by Councilwoman Tapio, Councilman Watkins. Call for the vote.
Wesley Hawkins Senior.
Oh.
Howard Rooks.
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior.
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy.
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yes.
James Cross.
George.
Anna Halverson.
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Robin Tapio.
Yes.
David Poyer. Donroy Gossberg. Sonia Little Hawk Weston.
Ha.
Jackie Sears.
Oh, huh.
Garfield Little Dog. John Steele Senior.
Yeah.
Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Fifteen yes, two not voting. Motion carried.
Chairman, Anna is gonna read the next one.
Resolution of the Ogallawasoo Tribal Council of the Ogallawasoo Tribe and unincorporated tribe. Resolution of the Ogallawasoo Tribal Council of the Ogallawasoo Tribe approving the legal services agreement between Homer Law Chartered and the Ogallawasoo Gaming Commission. Whereas Ogallawasoo Tribe, the tribe has adopted its constitution and bylaws by referendum vote on December fourteenth nineteen thirty-five in accordance with section sixteen of the Indian Reorganization Act of nineteen thirty-four twenty-five USC subsection four seventy-six. And under Article Three of the Constitution, the Ogallawasoo Tribal Council the tribal council is the governing body of the Ogallawasoo Tribe. And whereas the tribal council has the power to protect and promote the health and general welfare of the Ogallawasoo Tribe and its membership pursuant to Article Four, Section One W of the Tribal Constitution. And whereas the tribal council has the power to manage the economic affairs of the tribe and to regulate the conduct of trade and the use of disposition of property on the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation pursuant to Article Four, Sections One F and One M of the Tribal Constitution. And whereas on November twenty-fifth, twenty fourteen, the tribal council enacted ordinance number fourteen dash forty-one amending the tribal gaming regulatory ordinance of Ogallawasoo Tribe the gaming ordinance, which authorizes Ogallawasoo Tribal Gaming Commission, the Gaming Commission to promulgate regulations and guidelines as deemed appropriate to implement the gaming ordinance subject to affirmation of the tribal council by duly adopted resolution. And whereas on July second, twenty fifteen, the Gaming Commission first entered into a legal services contract with Homer Law Chartered pursuant to Section two point one of the then effective OST GRA regulations which authorizes the commission to contract for legal counsel and pay his fees and expenses under such terms as the commission desires and has thereafter elected to renew its legal services agreement with Homer Law Chartered on an annual basis. And whereas the Gaming Commission desires to renew its legal services agreement with Homer Law Chartered for calendar year twenty twenty-four and whereas the tribal council desires to approve the legal services agreement between the Gaming Commission and Homer Law Chartered for calendar year twenty twenty-four. Now therefore be it resolved that the tribal council hereby ratifies and approves the legal services contract between the Ogallawasoo Tribal Gaming Commission and Homer Law Chartered for calendar year twenty twenty-four. Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Howerson, second by Councilwoman Tapio. Secretary, call for the vote.
Wesley Hawkins Senior.
Oh.
Howard Rooks.
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior.
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy.
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yes.
James Cross. Anna Halverson.
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Robin Tapio.
Yes.
David Poyer. Donroy Gossberg. Sonia Little Hawk Weston.
Ha.
Jackie Sears.
Oh, huh.
Garfield Little Dog. John Steele Senior. Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Fifteen yes, two not voting. Motion carried.
Okay, the next one, Robin will read number six.
Okay, thank you, Mister Chair. Ordinance of the Ogallawasoo Tribal Council of the Ogallawasoo Tribe and unincorporated tribe. Ordinance of the Ogallawasoo Tribal Council of the Ogallawasoo Tribe amending ordinance number twenty-three dash thirteen Criminal Offense Code Section five three eight sale and possession of an alcoholic beverage. Whereas the Ogallawasoo Tribe is a sovereign tribal nation that has entered into treaties as the supreme law of the land with the United States government pursuant to the U.S. Constitution Article Six and is a signatory to the Treaty of Fort Laramie of eighteen fifty-one, one stat seven four nine um and the Treaty of Fort Laramie of eighteen sixty-eight, fifteen stat, six thirty-five and continues the nation-to-nation relationship with the federal government. And whereas the Ogallawasoo Tribe organized under section sixteen of the Indian Reorganization Act of nineteen thirty-four, twenty-five USC subsection five, one, two, three by adopting a federally approved constitution and bylaws and under Article Three of the Tribal Constitution, the Ogallawasoo Tribal Council is the governing body of the tribe. And whereas Article Four, Section One F, One K, One M, and One W empower the tribal council to manage the economic affairs of the tribe, protect and preserve the property of the tribe, adopt laws governing the conduct of persons on the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation and adopt laws in protecting and promoting the health and general welfare of the Ogallawasoo Tribe and its membership. And whereas the current Criminal Offense Code Section five three eight is all inclusive of alcohol offenses and offenses regarding the alcohol should be separated in order to determine appropriate charges and penalties for consumption and illegal selling of alcohol. And whereas the illegal selling of alcohol has devastated our people and communities by contributing to addiction, chronic illnesses, and death and destruction of families and contributes to the increase of crime. And whereas Section five three eight does not adequately distinguish between consumption and the selling of alcohol which leads to those illegally selling alcohol within the reservation not being properly held accountable and and ordinance number twenty twenty-four, whereas the current provision reads as follows. Five thirty-eight sale and possession of an alcoholic beverage. A, it shall be unlawful to buy, sell, serve, give away, consume, furnish, or possess any beer, ale, wine, liquor, spirits, or any other beverage or product containing alcohol for ingestion by human beings or to appear or to be found in a place where alcoholic beverages are sold and or consumed except as provided by federal law or tribal law. B, possession or consumption of an alcoholic beverage in violation of federal law or tribal law is a class three offense. Buying, selling, serving, or furnishing an alcohol beverage in violation of federal or tribal law is a class one offense. C, any such alcoholic beverage handled in violation of this section is hereby declared to be contraband and civil proceedings may be had, may be held against such al- may be had against such alcoholic beverages for forfeiture as provided by law. Whereas the separation of the charges of Section five three eight will help clarify and bring forth the appropriate charges between individuals who are consuming alcohol and those that are illegally selling alcohol. And whereas the OST Law and Order Committee has reviewed the proposed amendment and recommends the approval by tribal council. Now therefore be it ordained that the Ogallawasoo Tribal Council does hereby approve amending ordinance number twenty-three dash thirteen Criminal Offense Code Section five three eight sale and possession of alcohol as follows with changes in bold. Sale and uh five, five thirty-eight sale and possession of alcohol. Five three eight, one sale of alcohol. It shall be unlawful to buy for the purpose of reselling. Um, ordinance number twenty twenty-four. It shall be, it shall be unlawful to buy for the purpose of reselling, sell, trade, serve, give away, furnish any beer, ale, wine, liquor, spirits, or any other beverage or product containing alcohol for ingestion by human beings except as provided by federal law or tribal law. Buying for the purpose to resell, selling, or trading, or furnishing an alcohol beverage in violation of the federal or tribal law is a class one off- offense and may result in banishment, exclusion or exclusion from the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation in accordance with tribal law. Five thirty-eight, number two, possession and consumption. It shall be unlawful to possess or consume any beer, ale, wine, liquor, spirits, or any other beverage or product containing alcohol for ingestion by human beings except as provided by federal law or tribal law. Possession or consumption of an alcohol beverage in violation of federal law or tribal law is a class, class three offense. Five thirty-eight, three, civil for- forfeiture. Any alcoholic beverage handled in violation of this section is hereby declared to be contraband and civil proceedings may be held against, had against such alcoholic beverage for forfeiture as provided by law. And be it further ordained that this ordinance shall take effect immediately upon enactment and shall supersede, repeal and replace all prior inconsistent laws of the Ogallawasoo Tribe certification.
There's, so we got a motion by Councilwoman Tapio, second by Councilman Watkins. Question, go ahead, Councilman Little Dog.
So it says that uh um these individuals who are caught selling alcohol can be banished, but it don't lay out a procedure like it does with the the dangerous drug um banishment. So how would that apply? I mean, what procedures would be followed?
So, um I put in there may because remember you guys directed me to research that on bootlegging, so that's coming down the pipe for for banishment. So, in order to just kind of put it in there kind of pro- proactively so we don't have to come back and amend it, just put it in there.
So, at a later time, we would come back with a procedure for
so.
banishment for bootlegging?
So, yeah, so once, once I get through the, the directive that you guys gave me on bootlegging and other criminal charges um that will probably all come under an amendment of the one that you guys just uh passed, so.
Okay, thank you.
Secretary, call for the vote.
Wesley Hawkins Senior.
Oh.
Howard Rooks.
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior.
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy.
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yes.
James Cross.
Yes.
Anna Halverson.
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Robin Tapio.
Yes.
David Poyer. Donroy Gossberg. Sonia Little Hawk Weston.
Ha.
Jackie Sears.
Oh, huh.
Garfield Little Dog. John Steele Senior. Craig Dillon.
Fourteen yes, three not voting. Motion carried. Go ahead, Councilwoman.
I have a question. I'm, I'm getting um text messages from individuals that are saying we're taking action to do, yes, we're taking action to do that in regards to alcohol. Um, how do we know that you um as council people could pass a drug test? You know, I'm willing to take a drug test anytime, any, any day. So, you could call Warren Cross over here and they could do a drug test on me. I, I'll gladly submit. But I, I, I mean, if they want a hair follicle, I'll do a hair follicle. I have no problem. So I, I encourage you, Chair, to call Mister Cross during our lunch break. Thank you.
Motion. I'll make that a motion that we have Mister Cross come over and do a hair follicle on all council people.
I'll second, second the motion.
Okay, so um, so we have a motion by Councilman Little Dog, second by Councilwoman Tapio. Oh, you have a question there, Councilman?
Yo, with this banishment on drugs and alcohol and the um bad dogs, we're gonna get a lot of this on our Texas, but you know, we gotta stick together and enforce this because it's for our people. They're always gonna have the negative, get hold you, crush you up and stuff, but we gotta stick with what we're making the laws for.
Oh. Secretary, call for the vote.
Wesley Hawkins Senior.
Oh.
Howard Rooks.
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior.
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy.
Yep.
Wendell Youngman Junior.
Um, yes.
James Cross.
Yes.
Anna Halverson.
No.
Ella Giancarlo.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Robin Tapio.
Yes.
David Poyer. Donroy Gossberg. Sonia Little Hawk Weston.
Ha.
Jackie Sears.
Oh, huh.
Garfield Little Dog.
Yep.
John Steele Senior. Craig Dillon.
Fourteen yes, three no, or three not voting. Motion carried. Correction. Okay. Correction, three yes, one no, three not voting. Okay, go ahead, Councilman.
Moving on. Resolution of the Ogallawasoo Tribal Council, Ogallawasoo Tribe approving the legal representation agreement between the Ogallawasoo Tribe and the Native American Rights Fund regarding the City of Martin Public Records request and appeal. Whereas Ogallawasoo Tribe is a sovereign tribal nation that has entered into treaties of the supreme law of the land with the United States government pursuant to the U.S. Constitution Article Six and is a signatory to the Treaty of Fort Laramie of eighteen fifty-one, one stat, seven four nine and the Treaty of Fort Laramie of eighteen sixty-eight, fifteen stat, six three five and continues the nation-to-nation relationship with the federal government. And whereas the Ogallawasoo Tribe organized under section sixteen of the Indian Reorganization Act of nineteen thirty-four twenty-five USC subsection five, one, two, three by adopting a federally approved constitution and bylaws and under Article Three of the Tribal Constitution, the Ogallawasoo Tribal Council is the governing body of the tribe. And whereas the Ogallawasoo's Tribal Constitution at Article Four, Section One B vested tribal council was authorities to hire legal counsel. And whereas the tribal council desires to enter into agreement with with the Native American Rights Fund for legal representation regarding the tribe's interest in the City of Martin Public Records Request and Appeal. And whereas there shall now be no charge for legal services rendered, if attorney costs are awarded by the court, the tribe shall pay North with attorney costs and fees awarded in the in accordance with the agreement provisions regarding the award of attorney fees and cost. And whereas the OST Law and Order Committee has reviewed the legal representation agreement and recommends the approval of the of the agreement. Now therefore be it resolved that the Ogallawasoo Tribal Council does hereby approve the legal representation agreement between the Ogallawasoo Tribe and North regarding the City of Martin Records Request and Appeal, as attached and incorporated as if fully set forth herein. And be it further resolved that the legal representation agreement regarding Bennett County redistricting entered into on April twenty six, twenty twenty three remains at full course in effect. Be it further resolved, tribal president or in his absence, the tribal vice president is authorized to execute this agreement. Certification and motion.
Most motion by Councilman Youngman. Second by Councilwoman Tapio. Secretary call for the vote.
Wesley Hawkins Senior?
Oh.
Howard Brooks?
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior?
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy?
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior?
Yes.
James Cross?
Yes.
Anna Halverson?
No.
Ella Giancarlo?
Yeah.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Robin Tapio?
Yes.
David Poyer? Donner Ghost Bear? Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Ha.
Jackie Sears?
Uh huh.
Garfield Little Dog? John Steele Senior? Craig Dillon?
Thirteen yes, one no, three not voting, motion carried.
Okay, the next one is the due diligence, and I believe Rayanne went through this due diligence and law and order already. I think it needs council approval, then after that they work into the contractual basis after that, after due diligence is approved, so.
I think the the Chair wanted to do that after lunch.
Yeah.
Take a second.
Yeah, well, if you wanna go ahead and approve it. Um Chairman, I need to ask this council um on the Attorney Generals, we we they need to be on after this because they got, some of them are in court and stuff. But they requested they could be on after this.
Okay. Okay. So we'll move forward with the 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 next one and then.
Yeah. I'll I'll motion to approve it.
Okay, so uh so we have a a motion by Councilman Youngman, second by Councilwoman Tapio. Yes, to approve the due diligence. TransUnion. Secretary call for the vote. Oh, oh, hang on, just we got a question.
So the the due diligence is gonna be approved for who? For what? For what reason? What's?
This is that one, remember they brought in the uh for the MMIW, remember they're able to do that software?
Yeah, cuz people are gonna ask us what's that for, so for the MMIW? For public safety?
Yeah, then after that, I believe the contract has been started to be negotiated, but that will come back to committee after, after this is approved.
Okay, call for vote.
Wesley Hawkins Senior?
Oh.
Howard Brooks?
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior?
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy?
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior?
Yes.
James Cross? Anna Halverson?
No.
Ella Giancarlo? George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Robin Tapio?
Yes.
David Poyer? Donner Ghost Bear? Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Ha.
Jackie Sears?
Uh huh.
Garfield Little Dog? John Steele Senior?
Yes.
Craig Dillon?
Twelve yes, one no, four not voting, motion carried.
And Chair, I'd like to motion to go on executive for the Attorney General's positions.
Are they online or or?
Just Joe and Lisa are out there. And I can explain Deb whatever we go in.
It just, just for the record, I mean, can we just explain a little bit a description why we're going into executive?
Unless you guys wanna be out there, just to ask them, interview, you know, questions or whatever, it doesn't matter to me. Yeah.
Chairman, we could just go ahead and have it open.
Okay, thank you.
I'll take back our motion.
Okay, thank you.
Well, and go ahead and turn it over to Lisa here.
So there was three letters of intent submitted to the Secretary of Law and Order Committee, and two of them we have on online on a Zoom was is Lisa and Joseph Jungar. Um Deb DeBrey had put her letter of interest in only to help out until we found an Attorney General. And she was not interested in the full-time being AG full-time. And so that's why we're just bringing Lisa and Mr. Young Jungar on today. I believe you, I believe you should all have their their letters of intent, well, one letter of intent and the others a resume.
Uh Ms. Lisa Adams, you will be placed in the waiting room after um.
Sounds good, Stacy, thank you.
Excuse me, Council, can we have your attention there for this uh this presentation so that everybody could hear out there and in here? Thank you.
Mr. Jungar, are you, can you hear us? Mr. Jungar, can you hear us?
Yeah. Yeah.
You are in front of the OST Council? And if anybody has questions for him, or he wants to, you know, go over your experience and education?
Sure, I could introduce myself if that would be best.
Nothing.
Um, um, sir, uh can you introduce yourself and give us an introduction?
Yes, sir, my name is Joe Jungar. Um, I'm originally from where I was born and kind of on the north side where the city turns into man there. Uh I went to school as a little bit of an older person. I was about thirty years old. Um I went at night, I'm very proud that I had a family and a job during the day, a mortgage, and I took care of everything and juggled law school at the same time. I graduated near the top of my class, I was magna cum laude, which is with honors. And I left law school, I was a computer programmer at the time, but when I left law school, I joined a very small startup firm that did class actions in what are called mass torts. Those are large environmental disasters or class actions against pharmaceutical case uh companies, those sorts of things. I did that since two thousand nine to about two thousand sixteen. I became a partner, a shareholder, and ended up selling the firm in two thousand and sixteen. We sold New York Company, a goodie company. After that, I'm a lawyer, and I took some cases, for example, a human trafficking case that I found really interesting. I really loved helping people, really loved helping people who needed it most. Um it was a lot different than sort of the class action world where you get civil law against businesses and such. I liked working more with individuals and people. I had the opportunity, when we sold that company, to move out to the Black Hills. That's a place that my family and I had loved. Uh we we camped out here, we loved the people, we loved the area, the different towns, the cities. Um when I did that, I took a job as a public defender because I kinda wanted to start hit the ground again, and I wanted to help people. I was promoted to the family department somewhat quickly. Um, worked on some cases that you're probably familiar with. I've served just about every population in South Dakota. And after doing that for about three years, um I honestly, it was the best job I ever had. I loved my coworkers and such, but I decided it was time to go out on my own. And now I'm just a private attorney general. I have a caseload of maybe a hundred cases in a busy ass at a time. Uh they're exclusively criminal law. I've been doing that for five years exclusively. Um, I enjoy defending people. I enjoy learning a lot about the law and the diversity it would do and the diverse. Okay.
I believe you have a bad connection.
Did you see the message that you lost me? Can you tell where where I was at when I cut out?
Your reception is bad.
Your connection is bad.
Okay, let me try to, I'll try to move in. Um I'll dial back and from somewhere else, and I'll see if it improves.
It's coming in good now.
You're coming in strong now. And then you left.
Okay, you're, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Um, I guess as a practical matter, can you let me know where I cut out so that I don't sort of start over? How much?
If you can't just briefly start from the beginning, if they're wanting.
Okay. Okay, well, I'll just start over. Um, my name is Joe Jungar. I'm originally from Cincinnati, Ohio. Um I have a wife and two kids, one's grown, and she's back in Cincinnati. I have a son who lives here in Rapid City with us, goes to Stevens High School. I've been a lawyer since about two thousand and nine. I've been practicing law that whole time. When I started, I uh focused on what's called class actions and mass torts. And we had a little firm, at that time it was a little firm, where we would do environmental class actions, civil rights class actions, defective products, those sorts of things. Anything where a large group of people was suing in complex litigation in what's called group settlements or aggregate settlements. We did that until two thousand and sixteen. We were pretty successful, we growed grew to be about three hundred people in the company, or the law firm, and we ended up selling the law firm. Excuse me, at that time, we moved out to, my family and I, after we sold the law firm, I was a partner in a shared shareholder. I think my formal title was director. We moved out to the Black Hills, a place we had always loved our whole life. My whole family had loved it. I uh had, I went private for a little while and took a human trafficking case, which I found very motivating. I loved working with the people, I loved helping them on an individual basis rather than sort of a class action basis. And um that case meant a lot to me, so I ended up joining the Public Defender's Office because I wanted to defend people. I wanted to work exclusively in criminal law, which I've been doing now for five years. And um since that time, I have represented hundreds of people, uh people from all across South Dakota, every sort of group. I've represented somebody from it. Um I love the people, I love everything about it. That's the best job I've ever had in my life. And to kind of take the next step in my career, I went private about, or I guess, you know, earlier this year, I went private. And I continue to take everything from misdemeanors to felonies. Um I do abuse and neglect cases, I do juvenile cases. Um I've started doing child support cases, but basically anything where a person falls into kind of the law and order context or where there might be incarceration as a penalty, I really enjoy working within the law there, learning about the law, and um defending those folks. I think I have a very good knowledge of the law in the criminal law aspect or with criminal jurispr-. law aspect or with criminal jurisprudence. And I think that the answers that I don't know, and there's a lot that I don't know, I have a good, good relationships with people like Jim Sword, Terry Pachota, those sorts of people where I can call them and ask them for more information. And I, you know, that's something I would do typically to make sure that we get it right. But with that, I guess I'll turn it back over. If there's any particular questions, I'm happy to answer anything.
Counselor, we'll tap you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The question I have for you is in regards to a court case with, about tribal sovereignty. And I believe the case is the Santa Clara versus the Martinez. Are you familiar with that court case? Case law, I guess?
Individual cases aside, I'm familiar with tribal sovereignty. It's sort of the cornerstone of what they refer to unfortunately as Indian law. So I'm, I'm very familiar and I genuinely believe, advocate and support the principle of tribal sovereignty. And if, if you have particular questions about like what that means with respect to immunity, I would be happy to answer those. How that affects contract law, how that affects criminal law. But basically, there's no doubt tribes are sovereign. The OST is a sovereign nation.
Thank you.
Questions? Go ahead, Counselor.
Yeah, good afternoon. My name is Sonia Littlehawk-West, and I'm one of the tribal council representatives for the Ogallala Sioux Tribe. And also I have a question for you. You know, we are really in need of a Attorney General. And did you just say that you, are you living nearby or if you were to be selected? Are you, you know, we would need somebody full-time?
Yeah, I, I think I understand that concern in that. That sort of concern is something that I should be straightforward and honest about. I live in the Black Hills. I live in Rapid City, so that's a little bit of an hour away. I would have to find a way where I perhaps like rented a place in Hermosa or down there and that I could travel and be there each day. I understand that the job requires a person to be there every single day. And it's not sort of a remote or a part-time job. So I understand that, and that's something that I definitely would have to work out if given the opportunity. And I think I'm going to forget to say this at the end, so I just want to say thank you all for hosting me today. I appreciate this opportunity. That's all I'll say about that, but thank you genuinely.
Thank you for being honest about that. I do want to say that we had a previous Attorney General, maybe, I'd say maybe about four years ago. And he would commute from Hermosa, that's where he lived. And he would come every day to work as our Attorney General. And so I will say that, you know, I just wanted to throw that out there to you because we do need a full-time Attorney General. And so, you know, however you figure that part out, I guess that would be up to you, but we would need somebody full-time. And so that's good to hear that, how you would, you know, have that, you would work that out. But thank you.
And if, if it's something that wouldn't work out, it's something that I would be open and honest with you about, so. But that, that would be something. I do have a sixteen-year-old son. I have a wife. He goes to school up in Stevens, and I would have to make arrangements for all that in sort of a very practical way. So I appreciate the question.
Any more questions? Go ahead.
Joe, my name is Russ Seff. Here I'm one of the in-house attorneys. Do you have any salary range that you're looking at?
The salary range is a tricky thing. I say this honestly. It comes down to doing what you love to do because in the end, nobody's going to be able to pay you enough to do something that you really don't like to do. Like, it's just not going to work out. My understanding is a practical matter, is this is something in the very low six-figure job range. If I'm misunderstanding that, you know, it's something we could talk about. But I think a typical salary for the amount of responsibility that the tribe needs, which is a lot, to be frank, you know, or they deserve, is a lot. I think that the fair salary would be something above a hundred thousand dollars, probably closer to like a hundred and thirty grand or something. That's something we could talk about. I'm, I'm most interested in making sure the job is the right fit for everybody. And then, you know, get to that later. If it's something that you love to do, it's more negotiable.
Okay, we have a question.
Hi, Mr. Jungar. I'm Rayanne Redell. I'm also one of the in-house attorneys. Are you, have you, I, I see that you've got some Indian law experience under your belt. Have you ever practiced within a tribal court?
I haven't practiced in a tribal court. The Indian law that I had was, I worked on, I'm sure I'm going to forget, a few engagements. Ample engagements were Standing Rock. It's time for them to negotiate their tax agreement with South Dakota again. That is kind of a boring, numbers-driven process. But it's meticulous and complicated. It does, you know, things like sovereignty absolutely come into play. Tax laws at the heart of Supreme Court cases obviously involving different tribes. And it's a common dispute, so, or, you know, relatively common. So there was that project. I've worked with some schools across the different reservations. Like expulsion hearings and such. I was, I had the opportunity to participate in a few. I worked with OLC on a intellectual property issue they had. I think they were trying to, at the time, they were trying to copyright their logo. But that sort of thing, and in the context of doing that, I studied and became able to practice within the Indian law model.
And then.
I don't think I ever practiced OST codes in particular because I don't think they were available. But I did write some ordinances and those sorts of things for various tribes, so I have a sense of how the model works.
Okay, and then how familiar, familiar are you with the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation and the Ogallala Sioux Tribe in terms of its law enforcement and the criminality here on the reservation?
I practice criminal law all day, every day in Rapid City. So we get a lot of people coming and going from different areas. But if you're, if you're asking about my familiar familiarity, excuse me, with Pine Ridge specifically, one thing I'm not is a pretender, so I'm not going to pretend to have worked on Pine Ridge to understand sort of on the ground what that looks like in the sense that you understand that. I, I am very well-versed in the law and many of my clients live on Pine Ridge. That said, I have never practiced on Pine Ridge in the criminal setting. Just want to be honest about that.
Okay, thank you.
Question. Go ahead, Counselor Dillard.
If selected, when would you be available to start?
That's a really, really good question because I do have a hundred and some cases probably right now, including federal cases. The state cases, I can work with my colleagues here. I was the president of the Black Hills Bar Association for two years, so I have good contacts as far as like giving my cases to other folks that I can trust that can handle them. However, like the federal case, I would have to wrap that up. I don't think I would be able to start within like four months. It would be something after that. I just have to wind down cases first.
Any, any other questions? Counselor, we'll tap you.
Yeah, do you have, what's your judicial experience?
I've never been a judge.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions? Okay. Lisa? If, if there's no more questions, maybe if it's possible, we can get a closing from you.
Sure. I think the most important thing to say in closing is that I'm really grateful that you would hear me out today. I really, really appreciate this opportunity as a person. This actually, this means a lot to me and for better or worse, you know, however this shakes out, I'm just really grateful for the opportunity from each of you. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. And, and so this is President Starr comes out and I want to thank you for coming on today and presenting in front of the tribal council.
Thank you each. I'll go ahead and drop off now. Take care.
Yes. Thank you. Lisa? You want to bring the next one up? Okay. Hey, good afternoon, Lisa.
Hello, everybody. How are you? I'm sorry, my little thing is kind of messed up. Let me go into video. All right. As mine. Hi.
This is President Starr comes out.
Good afternoon, President.
Yes, we'll jump right into it. If you can just give us a brief introduction and who you are and your character, that'd be great.
Sure. My name is Lisa Adams. I've been married to a tribal member for going on thirty-four, eh, thirty-four years this year. And I served as the Attorney General for approximately a year last year. And I stepped down for a number of reasons, and I have put in for the position again because I see some issues that I'm able to help with. The issue, as I see it, is what the council expects of the office. And that really, there was a difference of opinion that was rather significant and that caused me to leave. So I'm just wanting to present the opportunity to, you guys, to do this again, but on a different footing than before. Because there were a lot of things that came to light when I was the Attorney General that needed fixing that now, just based on what I heard in this meeting today, amending the banishment code, amending the criminal code, defining dangerous drug offenses to not include addicts. And allowing people an opportunity to show that they've changed, among other things. The communication channels need to be different in order for the Attorney General's office to work properly, in my professional opinion. And so that's why I decided to put in for it again. And understanding a lot of the things that have happened since I left. I followed every council meeting. I listened to what you guys say. Nothing that I did as the Attorney General was ever personal, ever. And there was a misconception that that was the case. It simply was not true. So I'd love to dialogue with you on what your expectations are. And in light of those expectations, whether a single person could even ever meet them with regard to being in that particular office at any given time. So I'll start with that and I'll lob it out to you. You know my background. You know how I work. I know the, the problems in the office, in particular with regard to processing cases quickly. There's a logger jam at Corrections, as you well know. There are issues, for example, with the banishment petitions I filed never being heard sometime later. I don't know. Could you guys just see me? Can you see me now?
Yes, we could.
Oh, okay. Let me go back. And I apologize for talking to you from my office, but we have a lot of cases here. So I basically wanted to dialogue with you about whether you would consider having me come back, if not full-time, part-time. Because a lot of things, you need an attorney to do there. And the prosecutors are amazing. Steph and Jen have stepped up to the plate. They're doing a great job, as I knew they would. But some of the issues that I had foreseen have come to pass, like the drive-by in Kyle. That was completely predictable. And so as I see it, better communication and meaningful communication with the council is really the key to succeeding, to anyone succeeding in this office, because I think expectations on one side were one thing, personalities got involved on the other, okay? And in all seriousness, you don't have to like me personally, but understand well that when I did my job, I did it according to the law, and I did it according to what the ordinance says you should do, okay? Part of the issue that came up when I was in the position of Attorney General was the enormous number of meetings I was required to be, to attend, and that's fine, okay? But it begs the question, do you need more than one person who's an attorney to truly handle the business of that office? And once I had been there for a while, I realized, yeah, you really do. You need, you need a deputy attorney general. One to go to the meetings, one to do the banishments, one to go to court when it's necessary, one to handle the serious cases, both to handle the serious cases. The federal authorities were discouragingly slow on processing cases, and people sat in jail for a long time. And regardless of what I did in order to charge someone, and then they were arrested pursuant to an arrest warrant, or they were arrested on the spot for various offenses, mainly drug offenses and violent crimes, I have no control whatsoever over what happens in detention or what happens in the court. And I think sometimes that the office was conflated with the court. It was separate. And we had thousands of cases. I believe when I left, the count was at three thousand cases. And so when you tie that into, say, the banishment ordinance as it existed then, you would literally be banishing thousands of people. And I've said this to law and order. I've said it before. So I expressed an interest because I really did like what I was doing. I got a lot of positive feedback. Of course, families were angry at me because their relatives were being incarcerated. There's absolutely nothing I can do as I'm not a judge. I'm not a jailer. I'm not a public defender. But when I got a case, I looked at it from both sides, okay? How do we best do justice? And that's what prosecution is about. It's not about jailing people. As a matter of fact, I really wish that a lot of the people who were in custody, both when I got there and people who went there because they committed offenses that were jailable and non-bondable, that there was an alternative for them to get out and get some kind of treatment. I tried to liaise with the places in Rapid, especially for the juveniles. And this was work that remained incomplete. And so I will cast it back out. And this was work that remained incomplete. And so I will cast it back out to the council. What would your expectations be? Because expectations can be met so long as one side isn't on attack. When you have people angry because your constituents are saying, my son was thrown in jail in the age, he's awful and she's terrible and she doesn't want to deal with it. That's nonsense. I spent more time on the phone talking to family members. You know, yeah, yes.
Your introduction times up. They're going to ask questions.
Okay, good. Thank you.
We have any questions? Go ahead, Counselor Dillon.
Lisa, if you were selected, when would you be willing to start or able to start?
Well, here's the thing. We can work it out a couple of ways, okay? I could start ASAP, basically, okay? The issue is what do you want me to do? So I would say two weeks, maybe at the most.
Thank you.
Tomorrow.
Any other questions? Okay, well, seeing that there's no other questions, if you would like to give a closing.
Yeah, I've pretty well done my closing and my opening. I had a lot of people very upset that I left. I had a lot of people rejoicing that I left, okay? It's not a position that entails being liked, okay? But I'm not there to be liked. I was there to do my job. And I felt that based on the ordinances as they were written, that I did, based on my capacity as a single person, dealing with thousands of cases, I felt that my staff and I handled them well. I made some mistakes, okay? But nobody's perfect. So if the, if the tribe wants to move forward in a positive direction toward having a real justice system, you know, I get that and I'm able to help with that. But it's up to you, not me. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll head out now. Thanks. Now I got to figure out how to do that.
We talked to we talked to Joe, Mr. Ditch. He's willing to do part-time and how he could get here full-time, just to let you guys know. Can we do the selection after lunch, please?
Okay. And Joe was the first candidate. Okay, so was that the final one? Or is there one more?
Yes, those two.
Okay. So the folks from Warren Cross's office are here also, so. And lunch is ready. We have a break for lunch.
So we'll go ahead and eat lunch first, Chairman.
Okay, so suggestions, okay, do a break for lunch, we'll do that. And we'll come back by two? Okay, two. Come back.
Recording stopped.
Yes, well, Sergeant Arms, can you give us some?